Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order our monthly meeting of the Avon Board of Education at 7:01. I have been reminded to ask all of our participants with microphones to please talk closer to them and enunciate so we can all hear each other's comments. I would like to begin with a roll call. This served us well when we were in the pandemic and doing this virtually so that hopefully it'll allow people who come to visit our meetings to know who is here on stage. So I will start with the board members. I am Deborah Schut. I am the chair. Jay Spivak, our vice chair.
I'm here. Thank you, Deb.
Jeff Fleischman, our secretary, is not with us this evening. Jackie Blaia.
Present. Thank you, Deb.
Thank you. Laura Young.
Present. Thank you, Deb.
Lynn Katz.
Present. Thank you, Deb.
Phage Singh.
I'm here. Thank you, Deb.
Lisa Semenera.
I am here as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Liz Summercorn.
Here. Thanks.
Thank you, Liz. And our administrators, Dr. Carnamola, our superintendent.
Present. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Nestle Rusak, our assistant superintendent.
Present. Thank you.
Mr. Medick, Director of Human Resources.
Present. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Russo, our business manager.
Present. Thank you.
And Ms. Moyer, our executive assistant to the superintendent and our board clerk. Thank you, Shirley. All right. If you would all join me and rise to say the pledge of allegiance. You can sit. 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 All right. Thank you. Just a quick public comment note. If you are interested in speaking tonight, Mr. Connolly is with us, and he will take your name on the list, and then Shirley will announce in order who has signed up. If we could begin with our mission statement, I always like to read this at the start of a meeting to remind us of our work together. Our mission is to inspire each student a joy and passion for learning and a commitment to excellence, personal integrity, and social responsibility. This is always our perfect segue into our recognition portion, and I'd like to welcome forward Mr. Duffy, and I don't know if Ms. Salvatore is with you. Yes, I see Ms. Salvatore with you. Please come forward, and we'll have you introduce your students.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to invite Chloe Invis and Sophia Giuliano to come up. Our two Avon achievers for June. And as they're coming up, I actually say they're two of our Avon achievers for the last two years. Why don't you come up front and center, Sophia and Chloe? Chloe and Sophia have joined Mrs. Aldrich's classroom nearly every Monday and Friday. You can turn around and face the board. They're the ones honoring you tonight along with me. They've given their time to support students with disabilities and help them with their social and verbal skills. Joining the classroom as typical peers, Chloe and Sophia's positive attitude and helpful personality were appreciated by the students, by Mrs. Aldrich, and all of the paraeducators in the classroom. Mrs. Aldrich told me, as I spoke about Chloe and Sophia, that they developed a nice relationship and helped work with the students on their social skills. Just showing up was enough, but they would go even farther. They would stop in each morning just to say hi to the students. They would seek out these students at recess and include them in games. They would check in with Mrs. Aldrich ahead of time to plan activities, took the kids out, found rocks, did some rock painting, painted their names on the rocks with them. Both Chloe and Sophia demonstrated inclusiveness, and their joy of participating in the classroom made a tremendous difference for everyone in the classroom. And at Thompson Brook School, we talk about our core values, our CARES values of care, acceptance, respect, empathy, and safety. And along with that, we talk about those values being what makes a strong community, whether it's in the classroom or the school or outside of school. And I have to say that these two demonstrate and exemplify all of the core values at Thompson Brook School, and I'm happy and proud to recognize them as our Avon achievers for June and TBS Avon achievers over the course of the last two years on behalf of the students in Mrs. Aldrich's classroom. So congratulations, Chloe. Congratulations, Sophia, in being Avon achievers. Thank you for coming.
Girls, do me a favor. Which one is Chloe? And which one is Sophia? Excellent. So thank you, girls. It looks like you coordinated your outfits. I love that. Really amazing comments that we just learned about you, and I can say that that is not something that comes naturally for everyone. It can be hard for some to go up and invite somebody to join them. So you taking the time is so kind and so generous of you, and that is a natural trait that I know will continue to develop in you. So we're very lucky to have you in Avon with us because you are spreading that kindness wherever anybody sees you, and it matters to the students that you're interacting with as well. We are so incredibly proud of you. So thank you very much for just being you. We appreciate that. Another round of applause. And it's summer. I give you a lot of credit for joining us tonight. So thank you for taking the time to do that. Thank you. Next, I will invite forward Mr. Giannini and Ms. Wallace from the middle school.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. I'm going to ask Lauren Teteau and Hannah Chu to come up, please. So, members of the Board of Education, this is actually the CAE award that we're presenting this evening, so the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education. And Lauren and Hannah were selected based on this criteria. They demonstrate leadership skills, a willingness to take on challenges, a capability to make difficult decisions, concern for others, ability to work with others, willingness to commit to a project, diplomacy, ability to understand issues clearly, and ability to honor a commitment. Pretty impressive for middle-school-age students. Let's give them a round of applause just for that.
So if I may just say kind things about them.
Absolutely.
So Lauren and Hannah, we are incredibly proud of you as well, and this board is very familiar with CAE. We work with them all the time, so we can appreciate the effort it took for you to even be eligible for this and now for us to be able to honor you in this way. We are incredibly grateful again to have such devoted students in our community because you spread that beyond the school doors as well. And so that really matters, and we are incredibly happy to be celebrating you tonight. So I'm so glad that you brought them to us. So another round of applause.
So I'm going to say one more nice thing about each of you while you're up here. So Lauren's an exemplary student with an enthusiastic and an enthusiastic leader who's passionate about her academics, extracurricular activities, and community service. And for those of you who don't know, Lauren has been the voice of AMS the past two years, doing our morning announcements pretty much every morning and sent us off on the last day of school with a little bit of sass, I would say. Would you say that was saying, "If you don't know the schedule by now, I can't help you"? So. And, you know, for Hannah, some nice things about her include that she's an extremely high achiever. She's a leader through her actions and kindness, taking pride in helping others achieve their goals. She's a member of the AMS Robotics Team, who we know did very well this year. She's a library helper, and she's a member of the AMS Field Hockey Team, so she's well-rounded and involved in just about every way at AMS. Two excellent examples of our pillars of character at AMS, and I think a great way to end the year for us. So thank you.
And I think I remember Go Bears, right?
And yes, we are officially the Black Bears now, so we're excited about that.
I have the honor of recognizing Donna Bodwin. So Donna, you'll join me. I tried to tell her she had to sit onstage for this, but she declined. So Donna Bodwin is retiring from Avon Public Schools this year after a 35-year tenure serving the students and families of the town of Avon. So I'd like to start with a round of applause on that. Donna's style in the classroom is one that makes you sit up a little straighter, but makes you feel supported every day you walk through the door. Students know the routines through and through. One, two, three. There it is. But with that, Donna has always met her students where they are. She leads with kindness. She leads with compassion. She leads with students first. There's really not anything that we can pull out of a textbook or teach in a teacher preparation program that defines the heart that Donna brings to the work. So with that, thank you for all that you've done for the thousands of students and families in this community, and we wish you well with the ocean breeze.
So Ms. Bodwin, we want to recognize you as well. That is a huge legacy that you have created in your career. We are incredibly grateful for the lives that you've touched, and we do wish you well and happiness in this time to just relax and enjoy and think back on all that you've accomplished. Thank you. Your students right here smiling the whole time that they were listening about you, so that reflects everything that we would love in hearing that students first. That's what we stand for as well, so we couldn't be prouder to have had you in our family. So thank you.
Thank you. Please say hi to Sarah and Nick for me.
Thank you. All right. Dr. Carnamola?
Thank you. We also have several administrators with us this evening that are retiring, that unfortunately this will be their last board meeting. Some, I'm sure, are saying, "Fortunately, it's my last board meeting." Seven days, as someone reminded me a few minutes ago, until everyone can do what they hope to do next in life. I wanted to start with, you haven't seen him in quite a while, but we had the pleasure of being able to reconnect on Friday. Dr. Voitek came to our administrator's retirement. As you know, Dr. Voitek announced his retirement earlier this year as the Director of Technology, and we have had Elizabeth Ferry with us since. But we never had a chance to formally acknowledge Dr. Voitek and the work that he did here until tonight, so I thank you, Bob, for coming out with us tonight. I think one of the things that many may not know about Bob is that 46 years ago, he accepted his first job in the L.A. Unified School District. And at the end of this school year, he will have completed 20 years in Avon as a teacher and administrator. That in and of itself deserves a round of applause. Many years ago, Dr. Voitek accepted the position here to create, and we talked about this on Friday also, a new pre-engineering program here at the request of Dr. Kissel. And as he said, he never looked back. He looked forward, innovating, creating new technology programs here at the high school, and then ultimately district-wide. I think when Bob first started, there may not have even been such a thing as a Chromebook. I could be wrong, Bob. I may just not have known about it at the time. You know, I'm not always the most technologically savvy amongst us. But here we are, 20 years later after Bob started with us with a vibrant technology department, meeting the needs of staff and students. And Bob, none of what we're doing today would be possible without the work that you put in over the years to grow our technology program department, both in terms of human resources and technology resources. And by the sheer brilliance that we saw from you every day that you were here, and as I've said several times to Bob, I certainly miss him down the hall to wander down and sit down at any given point and talk. Anything you want to talk to Bob about, Bob knows more than you do. That's what I learned over the past four years. Rob's one of the smartest men that I've ever met, and I miss you, Bob, and I wish you the best in your retirement. Thank you. Bob, we have a little something for you. We're going to come down. I know we may have others that want to say something to Bob, Deb. I just remembered one more thing when you said something about him always having a smile. You said he always had a blast. One of Bob's other sayings. He thanked us for allowing him to play in the sandbox while he was here of technology. I think that speaks volumes about how you saw your work every day, not in the terms of children's sandbox, but any innovation that could have been tried, Bob was willing to do it. Thank you.
If anyone else would like to send well wishes to Dr. Voitek as well, I know a lot of us have known him over the years. Welcome to do so. Go ahead, Jackie.
I would just wish you well, Dr. Voitek, in your retirement and your adventures after this, and I also appreciate all that you've done for us. I feel like anytime I had a question when I first started, I would kind of say, "Is there any way I can get in touch with Dr. Voitek? Can I get permission to talk to him?" Because I screwed all this up, or I downloaded all my personal emails onto the public thing, and everybody knows all my business, or whatever it was. So I appreciate your kindness and just wish you well.
Thank you. I also want to wish you good luck in your next steps in what you're doing, but also just thank you for our district and always being on top of technology and innovation and just always respecting your intellectual wisdom in whatever you approach. Thank you.
I remember when, I'm going to say it wrong, but the cardboard, do you remember when that came out? You were so excited about it, like you were just oozing with enthusiasm of the potential of what we could do with it. So anytime something new came out, you were on top of it, and it was so joyful to see you enjoying it that it was contagious for everyone. So I know whatever you're going to do moving forward, you're going to have fun, so we're happy for you.
Thank you. All right. I know I'm going out of order in the agenda, but I'd like to also recognize Dr. Eileen O'Neil, who was able to be with us tonight too. Thank you, Eileen. If you've only recently met Eileen, then you know that she has been the Family and Student Services Coordinator with us at Central Office since, I believe, April of last year, when she took a leap of faith and came aboard with us at Central Office to try this new-fangled thing that we had put together that encompassed a lot of ground here in Avon between working with our students doing internships, which has been incredibly difficult in the past two years during the pandemic when we've had very dwindling, I'll say, partners in the internship program, as you might imagine, due to the fact that many would not let students in to companies and medical settings where we had often placed students. Eileen still worked hard at it, however, found internships everywhere that she could, many of which were with us here in the school district if that was what we needed to do to be able to keep our program moving forward. What you may not also know, if you're more recently with us, is that Eileen started with us here at the high school as an assistant principal, which is how I first met her, actually, before I came to Avon. She also has been around for a little bit, not as long as Bob. Eileen gets upset, I think, when I say how long. But you have been with us for the past eight years, and I know that since you graduated from Boston University in 1980-something.
One.
One. I knew what it was. I wasn't going to say it. You have spent an entire lifetime working with young people and with other educators throughout the Northeast and down south for a tiny stint. So just wanted to again express my gratitude, Eileen, for all that you have contributed to our leadership team, for welcoming me and getting me up to speed very early on here at the high school, and then having the grace to make the change and come over with us at Central Office and do the best you could through what was a little bit of an impossible time to have the position that you have had. Thank you.
This may not be efficient, but it feels more important when we take our steps down to see each of you. So I would like to point out that Ms. O'Neil is quite the singer as well. If you haven't heard her, she is quite talented, so I just needed to put a little shout out for you there. We so appreciate the time and the love and the care that you've put into being here with us, and we know the students have benefited from having you, and that's the most important piece. So thank you for finishing out with us, and anything you're moving on to, I hope you find pure joy. So thank you, Eileen. Anyone else like to possibly say? Go ahead, Jackie.
I just, I feel like I kind of started when, I don't, Eileen, you had been here a few years ago, but a few years when I first started, but I guess I would just say kind of the same thing. Thank you for your kindness and generosity. I knew towards me, I was kind of a overzealous, super-exitable new board member who really was wild. And I just really, you were always so kind, and you always were happy to help and to kind of point us in the right direction, and I just wish you all the best as you go on to what I'm sure will be other very exciting adventures for you. So thanks for all you've done for us.
Go ahead, Jay.
Eileen, I appreciate all your time in the district. I don't believe it's been eight years. I realize we were once on a workshop together at the high school, and I got to meet you and get to know you better through that process. So, you know, I just think you've had an incredible impact on so many students in this building, and they'll remember that. So good luck in what you do next, and thank you.
Go ahead, Lisa, and then Laura.
Eileen, I just want to speak to Jay, saying that you've impacted many students. I recall a story from my own daughter who went on a field trip with you and said, "You're quite the rager on the louge going down in Canada." So you've impacted many. You've impacted many, and I wish you the best of luck and happiness in your retirement.
I just want to, I can't say anymore than what everybody's already said, other than that you are a great advocate for students, and you certainly helped one of ours. I've been here long enough that it's been almost since you started here, and we will miss you very much. Thank you so much for all your work for all students in the district and whatever your next endeavors are. We wish you the very best.
So, as you know, we had a mini recognition of Mr. Ranklitz at graduation. If you were with us last week, a beautiful graduation. I appreciate it. Want to thank you again for that, Mike. But tonight, we wanted to make sure that we were able to recognize you also here amongst the board. And for those of you who may be new to us and don't know, Mike is retiring after 30 years in education, a bit of time in the private sector, and in the service before that. But we've come to know him here in the past 10 years in Avon. He started with us at Thompson Brook School as the principal there, and as you sure know by now, at one point, Mike got what I still call a little bit of a crazy phone call from me to ask that he assume the principal role here at the high school. And that was July of 2018. I had been here all of about four months, but I knew that Mike was a valued member of the administrative team and of the Avon community who had already earned the respect of students, families, staff, and board members alike. So I looked to Mike to work on our behalf to stabilize the high school after many leadership changes and to keep us growing and making progress toward our goals. Mike has demonstrated the same consistent, dedicated, calm leadership here at the high school that he did at Thompson Brook, except certainly to another level of leadership as anyone who has to step in and lead a high school of our size knows. Mike, I want to thank you again for your support of me as a new superintendent, the entire administrative team, keeping our high school moving forward, including towards our goals with NEOS accreditation, bringing back pep rallies, bonfires, attending nearly every single athletic contest this school has had since you came, concert and any other event. You were always able to find Mike there, and that was noticed by students and parents and certainly us. So four years later, we are saying goodbye to Mike. Our students, I think, and our PTO gave you a very nice tribute at graduation. I'm not sure that we can outdo that tonight with the gift that we have for you, but at least know that as you leave, you've made a difference here for students, parents, and for all the educators that you've touched throughout the district. Thank you again.
So before I come down, and hopefully I can get a hug, Mike, I just enjoyed sending you off. I had the privilege of meeting you your very first year. I got to be PTO president under your leadership with my child in the fifth grade, and I was so impressed with you then and so incredibly grateful when you said yes to come to the high school. I've always thought of you as Mr. Safety because you've always had that first and foremost. We always knew at any kind of meeting where the exits were, and we knew how to get ourselves out of the building if need be. But I can also speak to the fact that when we had the theater performances at Thompson Brook, you came to every single show there as well, and you brought your wife, and she enjoyed it. So it was really wonderful to see you always present, and I know you put students first. Incredibly grateful and so thrilled to be able to wish you well onto your next stage. So we've got a gift for you too.
I want to correct myself too, Mike. I believe I added on a year because I have 2023 on the brain. I think you've been with us nine years, right? 2013?
Open up to other board members who might want to say. Go ahead, Jackie.
I just want to say thank you to Mr. Ranklitz as a parent, really. I think two or three of my kids graduated under your tenure, and I'm grateful for your leadership. And I'm sure my kids probably really benefited from all that you brought to the high school. And I think my dad was also a principal, and I know what value there is in being kind of loved and admired by your staff and your students, and there is nothing more obvious than at graduation to see how admired you were by those people, and I just thought that was fantastic and really beautiful, and I just want to congratulate you on such a job well done, and we were really lucky to have you, and wish you well. Congratulations.
All right, Jay.
I would also like to thank you for both your time at Thompson Brook and at the high school and knowing the challenges that you faced when you got that phone call from Dr. Carnamola and you brought stability to our district and stepped up, and definitely was a huge help to our community and our high school. And just appreciate everything you've done and looking at how, I guess, you spent four years here like any other student and going through, and that's the right timeframe to move on. So good luck next.
Phage?
So, Mike, I think you've had two of my girls through
Open up to other board members who might want to say. Go ahead, Jackie.
I just want to say thank you to Mr. Rankowitz. As a parent, really, I think two or three of my kids graduated under your tenure, and I'm grateful for your leadership. And I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure my kids probably really benefited from all that you brought to the high school. And I think my dad was also a principal, and I know what value there is in being kind of loved and admired by your staff and your students. And there is nothing more obvious than at graduation to see how admired you were by those, by, by those people. And I just thought that was fantastic and really beautiful. And I just want to congratulate you on such a job well done, and we were really lucky to have you and wish you well. Congratulations.
I would also like to thank you for both your time at Thompson Brook and at the high school and knowing the, the challenges that you faced when you got that phone call from Dr. Carnamora, and you brought stability to our district and stepped up and definitely was a huge help to our community and our high school. And just appreciate everything you've done and looking at how, I guess, you spent four years here like any other student and going through, and that's the right timeframe to move on. So good luck next.
So Mike, I think you've had two of my girls through Thompson Brook and the high school. I just want to say that I appreciate everything you've done for not only the students, but I think for the community as well. You know, last week at graduation, it was really emotional to see the touching remarks that the students had for you. And I think that's a testament to the type of educator you are. And I was happy to see that the students recognized that. And everybody was just really thrilled at the responses from the students about the time that you've given them. Especially, you know, the class of 2022 really appreciated that you brought that stability and leadership to the high school when we needed it most. And the last two years with the pandemic, you stuck it out. So thank you from the bottom of our hearts, and good luck in retirement.
Last but not least, I wanted to say for someone who sits on the stage with us, Dr. Donna Nestle-Rusak. And 42 years in education later, as Donna said to me when we were talking about this about a month ago, "You didn't realize you worked with a dinosaur." I said, "No, it's not about working with a dinosaur. It's, it's the amount of time that I think about. You've had the chance to touch so many student, lives of so many students, faculty, and staff." Donna started her work at the University of Hartford and moved on to Manchester, Torrington, West Hartford, and finally here in Avon with us. And of course, you know, I think that I would say that the most important impactful work that Donna has done is with us. And since her arrival 10 years ago in 2012, Dr. Rusak has led the district's efforts in development of new curricula, the continued improvement of teaching and learning through a comprehensive professional learning, the development of standardized assessments, and what I would call a relentless drive to pursue and procure resources that are necessary for teachers and students. And of course, the oversight of countless other innovative systems that may have been able to help us to maintain continuous improvement here in Avon Public Schools. Of course, those are the things, just a small sampling of the very large structures and systems that Donna has put into place, has overseen in these years, and has continued to keep moving the district forward. We, we joke often about the difference between her arrival here and her departure. I, I have lost count of how many curriculum have been written under your leadership alongside of our staff. Standardized assessments, new teacher evaluation, administrator evaluation. I believe you referred to it as the trifecta when you first started. We had a new evaluation system. We had the Common Core, and I'm trying to remember what the third was right now. Smarter Balance. That was definitely the trifecta. So from then to now, the amount of hard work and dedication that you have shown to Avon Public Schools is more commendable, I think, than, than we can cover in one night in one little gift bag. But of course, I'd also like to personally thank Donna for your kindness, professionalism, and steadfast commitment to supporting not only what we call the office of the superintendent, but the person in the chair. Sorry, said I was going to not be this person tonight. We have another week to go, too. My transition to leading Avon Public Schools and the continued success, though of course, that definition can change daily in my role. My continued success as our superintendent has been made easier because I've had you at my side. So I just want to express gratitude tonight for the legacy that you're leaving here for us and for me. Thank you, Donna.
I want to thank you, Donna, as well. You've been so gracious to guide all board members through any curriculum questions and to just think of how you will be impacting this district for so many years to come because you helped write it. And that will play out in students' lives forever. And I think that is quite the legacy that you have had, that impact on so many students. And you always have a smile on your face as well, which is always a joy. And you have quite a sense of humor. So I will say, it's, it's a little dry, but it sends the, the punchline. It's really, I quite have enjoyed that. So thank you for being a part of this team. Thank you for helping just in all the transitions that have happened since I've been on the board and had the opportunity to witness, and I'm sure you've lived through more. But we appreciate that, and we recognize it. And just saying all of these things to all of you who are leaving us, it has only reaffirmed knowing that this is truly a calling. This profession is a calling, and you have all answered that call because you have a passion for it. And it comes through, and we are so grateful that you chose Avon to share some of that with us. So thank you, Donna. All right, I'll open it up to any other board members. Go ahead, Jackie.
I feel like I could say the same thing to all of the people who I worked with when I first started. But you were really, really patient with me. And I think because we worked together on curriculum, and I am a layperson, you have always really taken the time to try to explain to me in the most elementary, literal, elementary way that a layperson could understand all the acronyms and all of the systems and how it really works and how it really impacts your students that you care so much about. So thank you for all that you've done for me personally. And, and I think that I've grown a lot just working, watching you work. And it's been a real opportunity for me to see all that you have accomplished. And I've really learned a lot from you, and we're going to really miss you. And I'm very grateful for all that you've done.
As Deb mentioned, the incredible amount of work you've done on the curriculum is going to benefit so many students for years to come. So that's a huge thanks for everyone for that. But I also just look back and, you know, the time you've been here, to me, has kind of been a roller coaster through so many different transitions and changes that have happened. And you've always been steady in your background, your experience, your intellect has benefited all of us. And you, you always have the answer from an academic approach and a calming way in explaining everything. So thank you.
Donna, I just wanted to wish you best, all the best. You have always exemplified to me the utmost professionalism. You've always done everything with such patience and grace. So I really, truly will miss you. I will miss, really miss you answering every bloody question that I always have. And I wish you the best and all the happiness and health in your retirement.
All right, now, we say goodbye to one of our own. And I have to just start by recognizing that Jace Bevec served three full terms on this Board of Ed and then agreed to stay on another year in order to help us out in our transition. And I am so incredibly grateful to you for that. When I stepped into this position as chair, you agreed to be my vice chair because I knew you had such wisdom, and you did it freely and willingly. And you've been such a partner for me. And I am so grateful to have served alongside you. I learned a lot from you. I know you're still in town, so I've got you on speed dial if I need to ask for any other guidance. But I just want you to know that we recognize the time you put in. This is a huge time commitment, and everyone here understands that a little bit more. But I can appreciate it on another level, just the time you put into finance and how you explained it, and you made it so easy for the rest of us, and just your steadfastness and your confidence in any decision that you made. You were never wavering, and it just boosts all of our confidence to have that leadership. So to have you beside me, I appreciate that so much. And I know that the board has only benefited and the town benefited from having you, and they showed it by voting for you that many times. And I'm incredibly grateful that you raised your hand to stay on, and I will miss you. So thank you, Jay. I really appreciate your service. And I'll open up any other board members. Laura, go ahead.
So Jay, in your work with the Finance Committee and the Alternative Resources Committee way back in the day, you have always, with everything that you do, every decision you make, you have been laser focused on transparency and accuracy. And anytime we work together, it's always with a deep commitment to being collaborative, not only with administration, but with all of us. And aside from all the fiscal work that you have done, you've also demonstrated your commitment to excellence in this district through your advocacy for increased student participation and college readiness, for access to school student supports, and making sure that everybody has or should have access to personal finance literacy. And you've also encouraged students. I've seen you bring students to meetings to have their voices be heard so that their concerns could be on record and shared with us directly. And I'm really grateful for the way that you've demonstrated and showed us what our roles and responsibilities are because you've been here 12 years, so you know everything to a degree, more than me for sure. And I'll miss you. Thank you.
Go ahead, Lynn.
So Jay, I've only known you for six months, but it really feels like much more because I'm on the phone with you all the time. And I, as a new member of the Finance Committee, I, I called you before every meeting, maybe twice before every meeting. And I'm, I'm always saying, okay, I have these really stupid questions. And you re-categorize my questions as, no, actually, that is a really good question. And you answer with so much clarity and with history as well to catch me up. And I'm really going to miss having you and your mentorship because that's how I view you as a mentor to me. It would have been extremely difficult to be on this Finance Committee without knowing you're there. And I'm also going to be on speed dial, if that's okay with you. I know where you live, too.
Jackie.
So I was just, I was thinking about this all day because I feel like we've worked together, and I love working with you so much.
Microphone. Sorry.
I really love working with you so much. I was thinking of when we all kind of run for the board, why we do it, and what the point is. And when you think about, when you were first elected, you know, there were first graders who just graduated, and the impact that you have made on their actual education has been tremendous. I think that's just such a meaningful thing. And I, I've learned a lot from you, and I think the thing that I've learned from you most is to really know and expect that every kind of learner can achieve amazing things and that we should be setting them all up for success and really supporting an agenda that, that doesn't leave anybody out, but really encourages all of our students to become high achieving and, and to kind of reach the very best that they can be. So I really am going to miss that. I've had so much fun working with you. It's been, you've been really patient and fun, and I, it's just been really great. I appreciate it. So I wish you well. We're going to miss you. I guess we'll all be calling Jay all the time.
Jay, we've only known each other a short while, you know, the last five months or so on the board. But I really do appreciate everything I've learned from you. And I have learned, you know, being a new member on the board and being a new member to this whole arena has been a learning curve. And you've provided me with a lot of, you know, background and a lot of support. And I really appreciate that and wish you well. And we know where you live, so we will be visiting.
Jay, 12 years is quite impressive, and I truly mean that. 12 years to dedicate yourself to public service like that is, is something to be commended for. And you've always done it with dignity and pride, and I wish you, too, the very best. And I will do my very best not to call you. And I don't mean that in a mean way.
No, that's very kindly. So probably he's going to be like, oh, you're screening your calls now. All right. All right, well, Dr. Carnamora.
I could say everything that everyone already said, Jay. I think you know that I've appreciated having you with me from the beginning. As, as the rest of you know, I, we've seen changes in the board since I was originally hired, other than a few of the individuals who are sitting up here with me. I remember in my interview process, I, I asked the board members why they were on the board and, and, you know, part of the, what, what drove them to be board members and to run for the board. And I asked that question because this has to be a partnership between a superintendent and a board. And if we don't share the same core values and, in my opinion, passion to do what's best for students, that wouldn't really have been a good fit for me, and I wouldn't have wanted to come and take the position in Avon. And when I asked Jay that, I still remember that his answer was, "I'm only here for the kids. Every, every decision that I made is, make, have made and will make is for the benefit of every single student in the district." And you giving that answer, Jay, was one of the reasons that I thought, okay, maybe, maybe this will be the right choice if I'm selected and move forward. So thank you for that, that drive, for doing what's in the best interest of students and supporting me and all of us through all of the changes that we've seen in the past four years. It feels like 100. Sometimes I have to stop and remind myself how many it's actually been, but particularly over the last two years. And you'll be greatly missed. The, the knowledge and the skill as a board member that you take with you will leave a, a hole for at least a time that the rest of the board and I are going to have to patch up and build up and move on. So thank you for your service.
Well, that's the most tearful meeting I think we've had yet. So this was really nice. I'm so glad so many of you were here with us to celebrate. And we recognize at this point, if you came here tonight to celebrate with your achievers or to be here and have this moment, it's perfectly fine if you would like to excuse yourself, and we won't take it personally. So thank you for joining us. All right, now we'll move on to the regular board meeting pieces. I'm looking for a motion to approve the Board of Education's regular monthly meeting minutes of May 17, 2022.
So moved.
All right, Lynn moves. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Laura. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Extentions? Passes unanimously. All right. Next is Board of Education's special meeting minutes of May 31, 2022. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
All right, moved by Laura, sorry.
Jackie. Oh, no.
By Jackie. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Lisa. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Extentions passes unanimously as well, Shirley. All right. Next is communication from the public. Do we have anyone on the list, Shirley? All right, before you read the name, I'll read the instructions for communication. This is the section of our meeting where Avon residents have the floor to share their thoughts and/or concerns with the board. It's not an opportunity for conversation, rather it's the board's chance to listen to feedback from the community. Please add your name to the list, and Ms. Moy will then call you in order. You must state your name and address for the record. Each speaker will have up to three minutes to speak. In an effort to hear as many of you as we can, we must adhere to this time limit. You can certainly state that you agree or disagree with a previous comment if you'd prefer to be brief. Brevity will allow more attendees to be heard. After 15 minutes are up, the board may choose to extend public comment or not. No speaker will include charges or complaints of a personal nature against any individual Avon Board of Education member or individual employee of the Avon Board of Education, whether the speaker names the individual or not. Please refrain from clapping or cheering. Ms. Moy will be our timekeeper tonight. If you should reach two and a half minutes, she will alert you with, with a 30-second warning. At the three-minute mark, you will be alerted again to signal that your time is up. We welcome your engagement and participation. Ms. Moy, our first speaker?
We only have one tonight, and it's Ms. Erin Dawson.
All right, Ms. Dawson.
Hi, my name is Erin Dawson, and I live at 50 Oak Bluff. I just wanted to comment on one thing on the consent calendar. It was Avon High School European Study Tour to Berlin, Prague, Warsaw, and Krakow. I was ecstatic when I saw this. Trip listed, I think it's awesome. The, just the experience of international travel for students will expand their horizons in the way they think and the way they see their world in ways that, you know, a, a book just can't do. What I was concerned about in it is, as in the, in the packet, it said that it was 100% classroom funded. And I want to make sure that And I want to make sure that awesome opportunities like this are open to all of the public school attendees at Avon and not just the affluent ones. Because some of us may look at the price and say, oh, you know, $3,500 to, you know, $3,800, $3,900 for a 10-day trip to Europe is awesome, you know? Where do I sign on this check? But for others, you know, it may be, you know, a financial barrier. And I think that opportunities like this, as a person who has come from an international school background, a publicly funded international school background, it, the experience needs to be offered to all students. So I, just as we do programs like this, I hope that we come together and figure out how to make this opportunity available to all students, whether it be fundraising opportunities as a group and not just an individual or one or two that need that help. But everyone come together and, you know, let's figure out how to expand, you know, these type of experiences. I love this. I would love to see more. I would love to see earlier. I personally started traveling internationally in fifth grade as a school-funded, a school-run program. And every year after that, you know, it just continued and continued. So by the time you are a senior, which this program seems to be, you know, 25 students, you know, seniors offered first, juniors second, you know, 25 doesn't go very far. But it's, you know, by that time, junior and senior, you know, it was old hat. So I would just love to see more programs like this. I am so happy to see this going forward next year. I know that this is the fifth time that it's been done. So I'm sure that this issue probably has come up in the past. But I just wanted to recognize that. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Dawson. All right, next is items of information and proposals. We do not have our student Charlotte with us this evening with school being out, so I will move it to Ms. Russo for our financial report.
Good evening. The Finance Committee did not meet in the month of June, so we'll have financial report in our August meeting.
Thank you. Next is our committee and liaison reports, curriculum and professional practices. Jackie?
We did not meet. Our last meeting was May 10. We are going to have, our next meeting will be at the beginning of next year, either August or September. I think the only question I had for Bridget, or going forward, that I had mentioned last time was, we did talk about the training that had to happen for the board members, and I wasn't quite sure when. I assume that's not happening anytime, that we don't need to do that soon. But I had read it in the minutes when I went over it before. Other than that, I have nothing else to report.
Thank you. Finance, Jay?
Thanks, Deb. Probably my easiest report because as Susan stated, we did not meet. And I don't think we have an official meeting date for the next one, so I have nothing to say.
All right, thank you. Negotiations, we are going to be starting with our administrators this summer. And we are in the middle of working with our security and safety specialists, but that's all that I have to report at this time. Policy, Laura?
The Policy Committee didn't, sorry, did not meet in June, but we will be meeting likely in August.
All right, thank you. Liaison report from the board rep to Capital Region Education Council, Jackie?
Thanks. So I did, Deb, thank you for sending the, I tried to send some CREC links that had news that had been happening at CREC over the last couple of months. I thought that might be helpful. I'm very excited that we are working on an open choice working group for some of the participating districts that also sit at the CREC council. We hope to really start doing that in September. I was able to speak to Christina Jordan today, who is the administrator who runs that program. She had really great things to say about the Avon administrators and said that they're excellent partners for the open choice program and very responsive and very, very supportive of their students, so she was excited about that. I guess I'll keep everybody posted as we get a little bit further into what that looks like. We're going to meet quarterly next year, and that's it.
All right, thank you. As far as the board chair update, you've heard a lot from me this evening. I just want to thank everybody for helping us complete another successful school year. So it's nice. I hope everybody will have some time to take a break and get some rest to come back in the fall refreshed and ready to go. I'll move it on to superintendent's report.
Thank you. And Mr. Medic will start with our hiring report.
Good evening. As you can see in the packet in front of you and on the screen, we have begun to hire staff members to begin with us in the 22-23 school year. In addition, we finalized hires of several non-certified positions, including a safety and security specialist at the middle school. Mr. Zayas joined us for the last several weeks of the school year and transitioned very nicely into the role. In addition, we've hired two summer IT assistants to assist our IT department in the myriad of tasks that it takes to get the thousands of devices up, operational, and recalibrated for the upcoming school year. In addition, the end of the school year brought numerous resignations, both non-certified and certified. As we recognized several individuals last month who are retiring. We also have two retirements. Mrs. Peggy Wagner, who has been an interventionist at Avon High School and has been integral to student math support here at the high school. And as we had mentioned earlier this evening, Dr. Rusak is also retiring. We are very well ahead of schedule in terms of our hiring for the fall. We will be finalizing all of our certified hires this month before June 30. We are also working to finalize several administrative hires that I believe the superintendent will now speak about.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank one of our newest hires, who is not yet on the agenda with a contract because we literally just finished putting it together and signing off on it over the weekend and then Monday, is with us tonight. Thought he would come out and meet us at least in the flesh before August and be able to meet some of our administrators that he didn't meet in the process. So no pressure to San, but I'll just introduce San Haynes, who is our new Family and Student Support Services Coordinator. San and Dr. O'Neil already know each other and have worked together in regional groups here in the state, groups focused on a myriad of student supports, including connectedness between the open choice program and resident programs in various districts and also other efforts related to diversity, equity, and inclusion throughout the state from both a curricular angle and a logistics and systems angle. So more about San another time. We haven't actually sent that announcement out yet, but I appreciate that you came out tonight, San, to get a feel for where you are before August. There's not that many people here tonight, so don't, we'll just leave it at that. So we are also in the process of assistant superintendent interviews. We have gone through our Avon High School principal committee interviews for the second time. And board members, as you know, we are scheduled, hopefully, to conduct a final board interview for a high school principal and possibly also, depending on the way things move forward, an assistant principal on Monday, the 27th. So I thank you for making yourself available because that will make the transition smoother for the individuals that we hope to hire to get them in place sooner. On our enrollment report, you see that there is a change. This is the kind of change, fluctuation we expect at this time of year. We're still doing kindergarten registrations. I hope we're a little bit further down the path within the next three or four weeks. This is usually the case. But as you've heard me say before, enrollment actually seems to settle around September. So we are moving forward with the plan as we already had it in place according to our sections and our budget. We are seeing increased numbers in pre-K for sure. I think part of that, and kindergarten, I think part of that is due to several different issues, one being, not issues, but factors, I guess I would say. One being the housing market and a number of houses selling and families with younger children moving in to town. And also, I think in the last few years throughout the state, we have seen families not sending students into school necessarily during the pandemic as early. So there are three- and four-year-olds, I think, that have been kept home and have just started within the past year or so registering. And likewise, with kindergarten, some homeschooling there. So I hope we'll see those numbers settle soon. And as you know, we are also doing the enrollment study. So looking forward to having some of that information as we go into next year and look at our staffing and our zoning for our schools. In terms of strategic plan updates, we, as I think you know, finished our focus groups at the middle and the high school. I think I said that we were doing them last month. I'm losing track of time, what meetings were when. But those have finished, and the individuals who assisted us in doing that are still putting together the full report and coding that data because it's a lot to code when you're talking about qualitative data from that many interviews with students. They interviewed, I think, between the three individuals who did focus groups, two who did it both at the middle school and the high school, and one who did it another time here at the high school. I think we're probably close to 300 total students that were spoken to, so that's a lot to put together for us. Likewise, we have put out our annual school connectedness and climate survey to our students. We have those completed at the middle school, at Thompson Brook, Pine Grove, and Roaring Brook because we did it from grades three up. And at the high school, we still have students logging in and completing them. So within the next week, we will more than likely send out the message to the high school students, kind of last chance, and we'd like to get your feedback. If you haven't done so already, please do so. And then we will close out all of the surveys and begin collating that data, which is a large task and something that actually San and I already talked about from a standpoint of trying to move that work forward. So I think one of the places we'll be starting together is looking at that data and taking it back to our blueprint goals and action steps. Likewise, I didn't ask you to do this ahead of time, Dr. Rusak, but I know you can say some things right off the top of your head because it's part of the reason you're this good at the job. It might be the last time I turn to you, it will be, I guess, the last time I turn to you at a meeting and say, would you like to take some of the teaching and learning update for the last few weeks, including the myriad of curriculum being written even today?
Sure. We're very excited that we have now completed all of the writing units, K5. They will be published on the website as drafts very shortly, as soon as we make that merge over with the curriculum company that we work with. Since school has gotten out, we've had multiple groups working. And today was a very exciting moment because we actually started writing the K5 social studies curriculum. If you recall, it was embedded in our English language arts curriculum, and we're decoupling it now. And it was just a fabulous day of people saying we need to do more inquiry learning. So that was a bonus, and it was just flawless. We've had people from the high school working. We're working on the new Black and Latino studies for the fall and getting that in place. So it has been very busy. We have three more days of curriculum writing, and we'll keep that moving along.
Thank you. And again, just to put that in perspective, that is an enormous part of our strategic plan, the work that Donna has, and Jody, and our principals, assistant principals, department coordinators, and teachers in the district have been doing for years related to curriculum. So you're never really done with that. But we are certainly in a much better place as we end this school year and proceed into next year. So we'll be revisiting some of our action steps related to teaching and learning, for sure, on the blueprint as we move forward. And thank you again for all that you've done there to lead that work, Donna. We also, just a few things related to some of the other systems. We have worked to collect the devices from, technology-wise, from our staff and students. There were numerous updates that had to be done to some of our laptops and so forth. So that was a huge undertaking by the Technology Department. They're still working on that. And of course, taking back in many of our Chromebooks and inventorying them again, making sure that they are in tip-top shape before we redistribute them for next year. So as you can see, that summer IT help is always very helpful to us to be able to continue with our large projects when the students are not here. So thanks to Elizabeth and Tom Klein and the entire Technology Department. It's been a heavy lift so far, and I know it's not going to get much easier before August. So I'll thank you. I'll thank you in advance. In addition, one of you, I believe, had asked me about the Pine Grove situation in regards to the capital improvement piece. And Susan, if you want to speak to the latest on that?
Good evening. So the Pine Grove alarm system upgrade that we had put into the capital improvement plan for this year was approved through the budget. We worked tirelessly with the town to try to get that out to a bid so that we could get the project done this summer, which was the original plan. Given some supply issue chain, supply chain issues and some other factors, when the bids came back in, the price was $118,000 more. That was approved in capital. So at this point, the town has asked us to hold the project till we can solicit either additional bids or the prices come down or we include that additional $118,000 in the funding request in capital for the 23-24 school year. Our current alarm system is working. You know, we have a fire alarm system, and we have that in place, and it is functioning. It was the additional upgrades and enhancements that we were looking to put into the new system as well as to align it with what the other schools have that still is the plan. If the quotes don't come down by the time it's, we present our budget to you, we'll go ahead and include that additional funding to ensure we're able to move forward that project and get it ordered and installed next summer.
Thank you, Susan. And before I move on, any questions about that? I just know we haven't been able to speak about that in a meeting since it happened on the town side, so. So the goal is summer of 23? Yes. Thank you. Even with this sort of a project, even if everything lined up and it was able to be done sooner and most likely that actually could happen, a project this size, taking down the system, can't be done while school's in session. So that's why this is usually a summer project. Even with the breaks and the long weekends and so on, this is an entire replacement that will take the time.
Yes. So because of the complexity of the system, one, the parts might not be in. And two, if anything were to go awry, we wouldn't want to delay school opening in such a short period of time. And given our custodial maintenance staff as well isn't all in person during the breaks, they also try to take some of their time off. It's just too hard to line up contractors and everything as well during that timeframe.
I'll leave some of those other pieces related to the systems, goals, and resources and building issues and so forth for when we get to the end of the year. Fund allocation requests, because I think we'll talk a little bit more about some of those things then. I'd just like to pause here and thank again our PTOs in all five of the schools for another great year. You'll see additional donations tonight on the calendar. Our friends in the PTO are relentless, I use that word again, in their support of the schools and in fundraising. And more importantly, even than fundraising, being able to provide opportunities for students to do things that might be outside of the norm. If any of you had a chance to celebrate at Pine Grove or Roaring Brook, for example, within the last month, Blazers Bash, I believe, we had at Roaring Brook, and the 30-year anniversary of Pine Grove, both huge events, hugely successful, attended by hundreds of people. I think last I heard, there were more than 700 tickets sold between the two of those events, possibly more because they kept selling so many at the door. And those events were really just meant to be fun and to bring an activity like that back into school, particularly after the pandemic, for students and families and friends and staff, many of which, most of which attended also. And in the end, they actually turned a profit, which wasn't even, which was not even the goal. It was really to put on as big of a bash as possible at both schools. And so I know you've turned around as PTOs and donated that back to us here in the school district also. And you'll see some of that tonight. Likewise, car parade. Again, thank you to our high school and to our high school PTO and parents and committee that put that together. That's become an ingrained part here in Avon Public Schools, part of our graduation with Avon High School. Something else I think Mike will leave as a legacy, and Carol, who I can see. And Carol, who I can see sitting out there tonight. You know I can't let tonight go without thanking you again also for coming and helping to set up the recognition for Mr. Rankowitz at graduation. So just huge thanks for everything that you all do. And I'll pause here for a second, too. I know that we're going to most likely have more of a conversation about the trip that's on the agenda tonight. So I won't say that much about it now, except to say, since we heard it in public comment tonight, too, that one of the many ways that we assist students in need of financial assistance on trips, activities, clubs, and so forth is through the money that the PTO raises in addition to what we fund here in the school district. So that has become an ingrained part of a partnership in helping our students and their families when needed for just about any reason. But certainly, I've seen quite a bit of that. And it's been honestly more and more necessary over the last few years. We see more of our students and families who have needed financial assistance, both from governmental agencies or even at a level that may not qualify for free reduced lunch, per se, but families that may be going through tough times at certain intervals, illness, job loss, or the like, particularly related to the pandemic. So thank you to our PTOs for your support in providing some of those extras to us also. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. So our consent calendar this evening is probably the longest that we have all year. I do want to reiterate how grateful we are for the donations made by our PTOs. They work tirelessly all school year. And then the students benefit so much from all of that additional support. So we thank you. We also have many contracts that we are approving. I am going to ask, I know one board member wanted to remove one item. Laura?
So through the chair, I would respectfully ask that we please remove item B-21-22-74 for further discussion.
Okay. I can add that to new business as item letter E.
Thank you.
Are there any other pieces that other board members would like to remove for conversation? If not, then I will move to approve the rest of the consent calendar as it is. Do I have a second?
A second, Dan.
Thank you, Thage. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Passes unanimously. So that letter will now join new business under letter E for conversation. So old business, approval of primary instructional materials recommendations. Dr. Rusak, would you like to speak to that?
Sure. At the last board meeting, I shared six primary instructional materials recommendations with you. The 30-day review period has concluded. So they're back on the agenda this evening for approval. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have on them.
Does anyone on the board have any questions about the materials? If not, then we will move to approve, and they will be added to our stock for curriculum, correct?
Thank you.
Yes. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve?
So moved.
All right. Thank you, Lynn. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Laura. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Extensions? Passes unanimously as well. So thank you, Donna. We appreciate your attention to those details. We will move to new business. Next is our opportunity to recognize the ratification of our superintendent's contract for July 1st of 2022 through June 30th of 2025. We had a benefit of doing our own board evaluation of Dr. Carnemola. And so now we get to say lots of kind things about you. So very grateful to have you in this district. You have changed the inner workings and just the community outer workings by your presence here. And we are incredibly grateful for your leadership and your commitment to our students and your collaborative spirit with our staff. You've been that way from day one and has never faltered. I've witnessed you mentor our staff and engage and try to enhance them within the district. And I think that creates a really welcoming environment for our staff to want to grow as well. No one stays stagnant. People can move themselves, and they enjoy the work so much more. You know our students by name in a lot of circumstances. That matters to me as well. I think it matters to them. They know when you enter a building who you are. And I just love that you're a part of our students' lives, not simply behind a desk. You make so many decisions on a regular basis at such breakneck speed. I'm incredibly impressed by you always. Less, and I only say this because you're so good at it that it's hard to be impressed by it anymore. You're just naturally talented that way. So I just wanted to take a moment myself to thank you for staying here in Avon with us and for choosing us. And I will open it to other board members. Jay, go ahead.
So first, I don't know if everyone in the audience knows that one of our roles, our most important roles, is to hire a superintendent. And I feel like we are so lucky to have you in our district. And having gone through that process, I can't think of a better candidate that we found. And your time here has been just an excellent presence in every capacity in how you've dealt with everyone in the community, from, you know, getting to know the students as Deb stated, to the staff, to dealing with other boards within the town. But I just think everybody has tremendous respect for the work that you do. And I look at it as, you know, leaving here and knowing that we are in a good place and just, you know, so happy that you are here and look forward to what you continue to do for our district. So thank you.
Jackie?
I would reiterate all the things that Deb and Jay said, but we feel really fortunate, I think, to have you here and to have you. I feel the same way about, that I did with Mr. Rankowitz leaving, that my kids really benefited from having great leadership through a lot of the really hardest times. I think any of us, none of us predicted were going to happen. And that counts for so much and really, I don't know how you did it, but you got all of these kids through and the staff where they are. So I'm just grateful for your really positive attitude. And I think you have a magical way of turning anything around. If people seem to come to you in a huff or a puff, or I'll say for myself, if I, immediately with a sentence or two, I've, you're just really good at that. You're really, really good at kind of saying, no, 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 you're not, you're missing it. And I am missing it usually at that point. So I'm just grateful for your patience with us and for your guidance and for your leadership. And I feel really lucky that you're going to be here for the rest of your contract. Thank you.
Thage?
Bridget, our time together has been short, but I have come to admire so much about you. The most important quality I think you bring to the district is your presence, that people see you in the buildings, kids as young as preschool, recognize who you are. And that's very rare in a school district to have leadership be so involved. And that brings what is really important to me, a sense of community. And I thank you for that. Yeah, we're just very happy to have you.
Lisa?
All I can say is thank God you're staying. And I echo what everybody else has said. You have always presented yourself with the utmost professionalism. I think, I admire your public speaking. I really think you deal well with the public, with all of us, with all your administrators, with all the students, and all the other boards here in town. So we're very lucky to have you. And I am so glad that you're going to continue with us and so proud to work under you and with you.
Liz?
Well, of course, I echo what everyone else said. And also, I, the first time I met Bridget was when my son was in kindergarten. And I was in his class for a party, and she was there. And I was like, oh, that's random that the superintendent was here. And then I think every time I'm at the school, Bridget happens to be there. And so you're just always around, and I love that. I love that, like everyone said, the presence in the class. She's been at many of my kids' class parties that I'm there hosting, and she happens to walk by and pop in. And I'm like, oh, that's great. She's here again. So I love that you're always around and that the kids know you. And I'm grateful you're here, too.
Lynn?
Bridget, we haven't known each other very long, but the first time I met you and I came into your office, you did ask that question, why do you want to be on the board? And one of my answers, I don't know if you remember, is because of you and your reputation. And I think I would have hesitated to run in a district where I didn't have respect for the superintendent. And you have not disappointed at all. I'm really just looking forward to getting to know you better and growing with you and seeing where the next few years takes us as a board and as a school district. And I'm so appreciative you're here in Avon.
Laura?
Your caliber of excellence and your integrity and your willingness to meet people where they are, whether it's a preschooler or one of your staff members or one of us, your grit and grace, just the way that you comport yourself in every circumstance, whatever it may be that's being put right in front of you. We are so grateful for the work that you do and thrilled that we have this opportunity now to keep moving this district forward and for all the exciting things you're going to show us that we can do together.
So thank you for choosing us, and I think you deserve a round of applause.
I may just say thank you. This is the most awkward, it's the most awkward meeting, I think, of the year for me. I appreciate your kind words. But I'd be remiss if I didn't say that I'm able to do what I do first and foremost because our community continues to support me and us and the work that we do. You as a board continue to support the work that we do. And our administrators, first and foremost, honestly, who help to drive this bus and to make sure that we're all successful together. We have often, you know, talk about sinking or swimming together. And I think you know that's the way that I see it. So I just want to, I appreciate your kind words, and thank you very much. I'm looking forward to another year that might possibly be easier, might not. I promise I don't go around looking for the parties. Just so happy, I guess it so happened to be that way, Liz. There's never food, anyway, at least during COVID. So I think you know that I work hard to do what I think is in the best interest of students, of all students. I'm a supporter of public education through and through. It's the reason I sit here today. So I wouldn't continue to do this job if that isn't the reason that I'm doing it. And so I appreciate the time and the space that you give me to be able to do what I'm passionate about. And I again thank the administrators here at the table with me and also those who are out there and engaged in other things that may not be sitting here tonight, but still know that. I appreciate all of you, and I thank you for helping us to get through another year.
Thank you. All right. Shirley, do you happen to know what page the Board of Education meeting dates are? Thank you. All right. Did everyone have an opportunity to look over these meeting dates for the upcoming year? Is there anything that sticks out to someone? Otherwise, we will approve them so that they can be 147, page 147, so they can be added to our calendar with the town. Everybody good? So if I could please have a motion to approve these meeting dates for the coming year through June 13th. Anybody?
So moved.
Thank you, Lisa. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Liz. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Extentions? That passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Next is the end-of-year fund allocation request. Is this for Susan or, yes?
Go ahead, Susan. Donna and I will chime in.
Okay.
Great. Thank you. On the memo, I won't read every single line and every single notation here to you. But right now, our anticipated savings based on the encumbrances and own liabilities we had as of this meeting packet, as you can expect, at end of year, as we put everything together, some of these numbers change on a daily basis as we process payroll, receive additional invoices and additional requests as we're still working through the end of the year. But currently, my anticipated savings is around $750,000. The large area of these savings are certified staff. We had some savings for new hires throughout the year as resignations and other staff members left or went out on leaves that we replaced with lower-stepped members throughout the year. We also had some savings in non-certified staff. The fluctuations of FTEs, given the environment, COVID, workers' compensation, and other sick leaves left us with FTEs unfilled at different points throughout the year in our non-certified staff, all the way from our custodians, our par educators, cafeteria staff, et cetera. Some of those savings are realized in that non-certified line of $240,000. Benefits, it's a large chunk of where we saved money this year. Our pension and our OPEP or other post-employment benefits. The market conditions prior to right now. So we may not be having this conversation next year. But the market conditions when we budgeted for this were different than when we got our number in August. So we had a realization, just an OPEB balloon, of $213,000 in savings. We kept that set aside throughout the year in case we were to need it, in case we were needed in other areas. And now we have that continued savings as well as all our other benefits, our disability insurance, our employment assistance program, unemployment, administrative fees, and dental premiums. They're all, they all came in very favorable this year, leading to that large savings of $325,000 overall in our benefit category. We had some savings in magnet school and summer school tuition, almost entirely due to COVID. There was less enrollment in those programs. They were either not as robust as they had been in the past, and these are tuitions we pay to other programs, not our own. And magnet school enrollment has continued to go down with COVID. And technology equipment and leases. We had some savings in our Chromebook leases and some technology equipment that we had budgeted a year before when we actually executed this year. The prices were less when we bought them in August and September of this year. That's a different story when we talk about in just a second where the Chromebooks and the laptop prices are coming in, for now. Professional development also was favorable this year as Dr. Rusak and her team in teaching and learning were able to leverage virtual professional development and other teacher-to-teach teacher or staff member teaching teachers. And that left us some additional savings there. We have transfers offsetting throughout the budget that will offset other lines that we had increases in, such as utilities. We've talked about pretty much every meeting that we've gone over, financials, our gas, electric, fuel, and every other expense that most of us are dealing with increased costs on. We have increased, continue to see increases in those areas. So all that put together comes to the approximate $750,000 that I'm forecasting for us to be saving by June 30th. So what we have proposed is we proposed using those funds to buy some of the items we have budgeted for next year, particularly items that we need to start the school year, Chromebooks and staff notebooks or laptops. We have budgeted for 550 Chromebooks for next year. We budgeted that cost at $165,000. Our most competitive quote we have right now is $188,820. So it's a little over $23,000 higher than we budgeted for. And in order to get these Chromebooks in time for the tech team to get them ready, to deploy to students in grades second and fifth, we want to order them as soon as possible. Also, our staff notebooks, this is even a larger increase. We budgeted for 250 notebooks for our high school and middle school certified staff for next year. We had budgeted $270,000. The most competitive quote we have right now is $346,900. Significant increase. If we're able to purchase them with these year-end funds, it'll help offset that cost. And when we talk about our budget for 23-24 and we look at the number of Chromebooks and laptops we will need to budget for the next year, we may be able to leverage the monies we've already budgeted in 21-20, in 22-23 to offset so our 23-24 cost isn't as increased. We also would like to outfit the high school community room. As you know, we've moved, due to COVID and due to technical issues, the board meetings in here, but also the community as a whole, as well as our staff and our students in the high school use that community room or would like to. We've had some technological issues there. Many of us that were in negotiations last summer saw how sometimes it worked, sometimes it didn't. Luckily, the IT staff was able to supplement us with some BenQ boards. But we would like a more permanent solution in that room. Mrs. Ferry is working with her team. Mrs. Ferry is working with her team to find the best solution. Right now, the best quote we have is $36,000 to outfit that room to meet our needs. We also have some additional textbooks. This is a small item, but I wanted to throw it in here because we will talk about our open choice allocation where we have the rest of our textbooks lying. But we've had an increased enrollment, AP Biology, next year. So we need 30 extra textbooks to fill those needs, and that's $5,900. Instructional supplies. We have a large ask of that in our open choice allocation, but we also have some remaining funds in here to support readers workshops, supportive text, reading units such as book clubs, leveled text, bookshelves in grades K through six, and classroom materials for our additional fourth grade section next year, totaling $48,833. And then we had spoke about, a little bit in finance, and Board of Finance had mentioned if there's any funds remaining after all this. So if we come in at this $750,000 or above to entertain prefunding or additional funding to offset the OPEB liability with that remaining balance. The purpose of this would be to lower the liability the board has in the '23, '24 school year. If the market continues to fail, the stock market, I mean, right now, the way it is, our market portfolio in both our pension or OPEB could be significantly impacted and could increase our liability. I don't know, it's a crystal ball, but talking to our consultant and actually talking to some members of Board of Finance regarding this is something that they had supported as well. If the board's able to make that contribution, that would be my recommendation.
Any questions by board members? Lisa?
Yeah, I have one question. So the community room at the high school, you plan or continue for it to be used as it's being used currently as a classroom?
If necessary, we will continue to use it as a classroom, but we do want to move our board meetings back there.
Okay. And the updates that we're looking to make will benefit it as a classroom and for whatever use that we need to correct? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right. So you're looking for us to make a motion to approve this list?
Correct.
Jay, would you like to?
Yes, I'd like to make that motion, please.
And do I have a second? Second by Jackie. All in favor? Aye? Any opposed abstentions? That passes unanimously. All right, thank you, everyone. Thank you, Susan. Next is the supplemental appropriation for our open choice tuition.
Thank you, Deb. Every year we participate in the open choice program, we receive funds from the state for our attendance of our students in the program as well as if we have preschoolers and the state's able to fund an additional allocation for those preschool students, we receive additional funds for those pupils as well. So we had budgeted, we always budget a conservative estimate when we do our budget with the town for the revenues. The budget, the town uses the revenue to offset the Board of Ed's budget in totality. So we budget our per pupil revenue that we anticipate from the state. And then once we get our final figures based on our 10-1 enrollment, that's the number that the state uses, the 10-1 PSIS count, we're then able to calculate what we're going to be able to receive based on that per pupil allocation. Then addition, the state takes whatever monies they have in that pool, and they also give an additional incentive or entitlement to those schools that have at least 10 students in a single school. And that number varies every year, which is why we're conservative with our revenue estimate. We just don't know what these funds are going to be, usually until late May. And we have these figures. So for this year, our open choice attendance grant, we budgeted $672,000. We received $706,709,000. That was our $6,000 per pupil, an entitlement of 22,709 students based on 114 students enrolled in the program in Avon as of 10-1 '21. In addition to this, we had preschool students. At $6,500 a pupil, we received $149,500 in our open choice attended, our open choice early beginnings grant. Those funds need to be spent to benefit the majority of the students in the district per the parameters of the grant. So every year, we ask the board to review what we're receiving, what we plan to spend it on, and then we move this forward to the town council. Town council then moves it forward to the Board of Finance for an additional appropriation so that we can spend and order these instructional supplies and other supportive materials that'll benefit the majority of Avon students. So what we're proposing to spend is $55,880 in instructional equipment and supplies to support visual arts, music, science, wellness and world languages at our fifth through 12th grades. $63,812 in textbooks. These are budgeted textbooks that we had in our '22, our '22, '23 budget for business, social studies and math at the high school and middle school. And then $64,517 in English language arts instructional supplies that would benefit all schools, grades K through 12.
Are there any questions? Go ahead, Lynn.
Just some clarification. So if we use the monies now, that means we, that'll offset our expenses for next year, correct?
Correct, some of it.
Some of it. So that will help in case the prices go up, or is that your thinking?
That's exactly it. Yeah, so if we need those additional, particularly on an annual basis, use this for the textbooks because if we walk into the year and enrollment changes, class participation, in particular classes that use very expensive textbooks, like our AP classes, we're able to purchase those additional copies, and we have those funds then already in the budget to support that.
If I may, though, I want to be clear, Lynn. It's not a one-for-one budget, I'll say, reduction or cost avoidance for the coming year because we also, as we budget for next year, project forward what we know, we can anticipate getting from open choice. So this doesn't come as a surprise, is I guess what I should say. We conservatively estimate what we expect the number to be. And as we are putting together the board's budget for the coming school year, we don't include most of the items we know we'll be able to fund here. So there are some that it will open up room, depending on how it moves forward, to your point about, because of price increases and so on, if we had to buy it next year. But for the most part, we are already budgeting, counting on this money.
Correct. The textbooks are really the only thing that's a true cost avoidance. Everything else is a conservative addition to the programs to support Dr. Rusak teaching and learning and curriculum that we would like to have, but haven't quite budgeted fully for next year.
So it's not a surprise, a surprise, a windfall, really? It's not really that at all?
No. Sometimes we get more than we anticipated because we do conservatively budget for it, number one. And there are years when we've met the 4% threshold for enrollment instead of the 3%. This year, and I believe last year also, Donna, we didn't meet the 4%, if I remember correctly. I think we fell short by one student or something, was that last year?
Couple of years ago, we missed it by a half a percent, one student. The other problem is recently that the open choice is having difficulty filling our declared seats. So for the last number of years, even the number of seats we've declared have not been met. So that's why we're going a little bit more conservatively.
And this is funding that has to be spent towards students, but it goes to the town first, and we have to ask them to return it to us. So it's a process that just takes place annually. So do you need us to make a motion on this? Because technically, they...
Yes, because we won't send the letter for the grant to the town until it has gone through the board approval process. Lynn, does that answer your question, or were there any other? I know we have some other newer board members.
No, that helps, thank you. The whole process is, it's a little complicated.
Yes. And I just also want to be clear, Donna's absolutely right. Obviously, we've had lower enrollment. They've had difficulty filling our seats. We've seen that throughout the state, though. I think that's another byproduct, I think, of the pandemic and not as many students entering the lottery. You know, families with students at home who had been homeschooled and not sure if they were going to send them out to school and so forth. Many of us have seen a reduction in the numbers of students attending as a whole right now. But I think we're still holding steady. We haven't, it's not a drastic decline, but it has been more difficult to fill the seats, and sometimes it's been right up until the last minute. But where we have been able to, we've also made accommodations for additional seats for siblings and so forth when situations have arisen. So we're doing our best to fill the seats, and so is Krakow. It's just not an easy time for doing it.
All right. Jay, would you like to make the motion?
Sure, I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second? Lynn, all in favor? Aye? Any opposed abstentions? That passes unanimously as well. Now we move to the item that was removed from the consent calendar. So this will be letter E. It is approval of the Avon High School European Study Tour to Berlin, Prague, Warsaw and Krakow from April 5th to the 16th, 2023. Ms. Young, since you brought it up, do you want to speak to that?
Sure. So I am a huge supporter, both in my role as a Board of Ed member and personally, for travel overseas to wherever that may be. I think it's an incredible learning opportunity for students. I was hoping tonight that the superintendent could provide further information with respect to the fact that we've never been asked to approve a trip like this in times when there is such an uncertain environment nearby to the area to where these students would be going. And I wanted to get further information for the board, if possible, on the risk management with respect to funds that are put down for deposit and also what sort of assessment would be done and the timing of that to determine whether or not it was still an appropriate place for students to be visiting.
Go ahead, Dr. Carnamora.
Thank you. So first, as you know, we have not proceeded with this trip in the last two years. Two years ago, it actually had to be canceled, not long before it was scheduled to go. I can't remember where we were going at that point, right this moment, but that was at the beginning of the pandemic when things started shutting down. So not long ago, I know Mr. Abrams spoke with Mr. Rankowitz and then also with me and asked about what I thought of the possibility of being able to run this trip again in the coming year. And my response to Sue, which is why you see the proposal here tonight was the same as I would say in response to the question. If we are to start planning forward, now is the time that we would have to begin the planning, which is why I let Sue know that he should put the request through at this point so that he has the at least overarching approval to seek out the contract, the flights, to put it out for interest, how many individuals might go, how many chaperones might we have. I think we, you know, as you've heard earlier tonight to public comment, we do the best we can to take as, I didn't hear this, but I guess this is in response, do what we can to take as many students as possible. That in part depends on the number of adults that we can enlist to bring as chaperones also to, for safety reasons, law and board policy. So it's a long process to be able to plan this trip for a number of reasons. That said, what we do in the business office is go through the contracts and ensure that we have clauses such that if there are unforeseen issues, there are more and more clauses you see that relate to pandemic-like conditions, which we did not see early on, obviously, and did have to frankly battle a bit to get money returned when that happened. So, because who would have thought to put that kind of language in a contract? So at this point, however, we do, we review every contract through the business office before it is signed that obligates any of the schools or the district to anything. We run it past our attorneys also, particularly when it's a larger scale item like this, to ensure that we have all the applicable clauses and language to be able to support students and families and staff members also if return of money is necessary. So some of the reasons that a return of money might be necessary is exactly what you brought up, Laura, which is international conditions that are not conducive to taking students to another country. One of the main determinants of that comes from the State Department, whether or not there are any advisories present. And it can go both ways. There can be an advisory right now that's lifted by the time the trip goes, and it could happen vice versa, that, you know, the morning of, they're leaving on the trip, an advisory could be issued. So that's something that we have to monitor and play, pay close attention to throughout the process up until the time that the students and staff depart.
All right, does that answer your questions?
It does. And I appreciate the public discussion and acknowledgement that while it is our opportunity tonight to approve this trip, that it's not the final say of what might happen in the future, and we hope for the best and appreciate the tremendous value that this kind of opportunity has for our students.
Are there any other questions? Jackie?
I just want to make a comment about paying for this trip and kind of the equity around that. And I, too, support it. I think this is a really exciting opportunity for our students. I know in the past, it's been a really very meaningful trip for so many people. I guess it really just brings up for me, you know, I think public schools and probably any public entity, the challenge of finding equity, if it's pay-to-play or field trips or costume for theater, is really important. And I guess I look forward to learning more and understanding more about what those processes look like as, you know, I guess as we go through the next year or two to figure out how that works. I can't imagine how hard that is to kind of make sure that every student is having that kind of access to funding. I don't know how that would work. So I appreciate you addressing it, and I look forward to learning more about it because I can imagine this would be spread across the district with all kinds of different, in many different places.
All right. Laura, would you like to make the motion to approve?
Motion to approve the AHS European Study Tour to Berlin, Prague, Warsaw and Krakow from April 5th to the 16th, 2023.
Excellent. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Liz. All in favor? Aye? Any opposed abstentions? Passes unanimously. All right, thank you, everyone. Shirley, do we have anyone else for communication from the public? All right, thank you. Next is communication from Avon Board of Education members. Is there anything that anyone else would like to add? All right, thank you. So now we are going to move into an executive session. We will allow time for people to depart as we do that. I do want to make note that it's for the purpose of discussing our Safety and Security All-Hazard Plan, and I invite Dr. Carnamora, Dr. Nesla Rusak, Mr. Medick, Ms. Russo and our Director of Safety and Security, Mr. Connolly, to join us.
Just to be clear, Deb, I think we've been asked to utilize the orchestra room for the executive session, right, to allow them proper time to break down without us having to wait?
Oh, that's even better, okay.
We will move out of the room.
So does that give us like a two-minute recess to get?
Yes. All right, thank you.